My faithful and faithful citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer please.
Sure. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you do for us. Please bless all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our birth. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus, amen.
Roll call please.
Matt Moore?
Here.
Bob Barlett?
Horizon.
Scott Detschau?
Here.
Abby Seer?
Jim Steele?
Yes.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
This time Lewistown Police Department Accreditation Presentation. Mr. Adams?
Just real quick, Mr. Adams is here from the Accreditation Program Coordinator for the PH Chiefs of Police. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to be on your agenda. Get the certificate out here. Before I present the certificate, if I may, I'd just like to briefly mention what this certificate means, because there's an awful lot of work, and really just hanging the certificate on the wall, I don't think brings justice to what it represents. At some point back in time, your police chief and mayor contacted the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police to officially enroll in our accreditation program. Well, what's our accreditation program? It's really no different than any other accreditation program out there. We send our kids off to college, we want them to go to an accredited college or university. There's accrediting programs for our hospitals and surgical units, where you have peers come in and where entities meet best practices. Well, it's no different in law enforcement. Back in the late 1990s, there was a study done in Pennsylvania showing that a significant number of police departments had no policy manuals in place. Those that did were very outdated, and there was no continuity between how police departments operated. Almost everyone operated a little bit differently. So the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police got a grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and spent two years putting together best practices in providing law enforcement services. They brought together law enforcement professionals from all four corners of Pennsylvania, including elected officials, including solicitors, including district attorneys. So there's a broad spectrum of people developing best practices, we call them standards. And in 2001, our accreditation program rolled out. Fast forward, right now, we have 198 accredited police departments. Lewistown Borough now being one of those 198 accredited police departments. Statewide, depending on when you count them, there's approximately 1,100 municipal police departments. So you can see, they're not all the police departments, not near all the police departments are accredited. When your borough, when your mayor and your police chief make the decision to move forward with accreditation and officially enroll, what the process started was taking a look at their existing policy manual and comparing it to the now 125 standards or best practices of providing law enforcement services. Making sure that they actually met those best practices, and if they didn't have a policy or written directive on the standard, develop one. And it's a very lengthy process, because when I say there's 125 standards, it's really a bit of a misnomer, because when you look at the standards, a lot of them have standalone best practices embedded in them. So when you add them all up, this certificate represents compliance with 370 best practices. When your police department, your police chief felt that they were ready, they ran through a dress rehearsal, a mock assessment that they handled on themselves. After they had a chance to review their mock assessment, make some adjustments predicated upon the mock assessment, they contacted us. Then I put together a team of three trained accreditation, law enforcement accreditation assessors, to come and spend two days here in Lewistown, comparing those 125 standards, those 370 best practices, comparing them to the policies and written directives that your police department has in place, making sure that all of those best practices are covered in written directives and policies. Having a good policy manual sitting on your shelf doesn't do anybody any good if nobody's following it. So the other component of our accreditation program for each one of those 370 best practices, they had to have two proofs of compliance. In other words, they had to show the assessors that a minimum of two times staff complied with all of those best practices. So then, after the assessment was over, a very lengthy report was submitted to the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, which meets quarterly. It's made up of 20 law enforcement professionals from all across Pennsylvania who had the opportunity to review the report. Your chief was there, along with the accreditation team, assessment team leader. They were asked questions, and after that was all over, a vote was taken, and the unanimous vote was to grant accredited status to the Lewistown Police Department. So what's the benefits of accreditation? Well, there's a couple things. Studies are showing that when you compare accredited police departments to non-accredited police departments, your accredited police departments do not get sued near as often as the non-accredited police department. Couple other things show that when they do get sued, the payouts are significantly less than non-accredited police departments. So your police chief and mayor are doing you a big service as far as risk management, minimizing your liability. A lot of the insurance companies do in fact give discounts to municipalities who police departments are credited, because that is a very high-risk service that you provide to your residents and people coming through. The other thing the studies are actually showing is that it's surprising that actually police departments that are accredited, fewer job-related injury claims, fewer vehicle-involved accidents as far as the police department cars getting in accidents. There's a lot of side benefits to accreditation. One of the things with accreditation, you know, I can't stand here and tell you how many times you did get sued because of accreditation. It's sort of like if you ask your police chief, "Well gee, how many burglaries did the police department prevent last night because they were out there on patrol?" There's no way to come up with that. But the studies are starting to show that, and like I said, the insurance companies are recognizing it. Going back a little bit in time, and I think the other thing it shows too, is we have in our accreditation commission, a standing committee, a standards committee that's constantly updating the standards. Your chief and accreditation manager are going to be thrilled when I tell them to come April, there's going to be an updated standards manual coming out, there's going to be some new standards that they're going to have to comply with. But it's a fresh program. We're constantly looking for what's going on as far as in best practices of providing law enforcement services. The one example that I use, I know it's a little dated, but most of you will recall, the unfortunate situation when George Floyd got killed, and there's a lot of push for a lot of reforms in law enforcement. And there were some of our state elected officials, our state legislators, came out with the eight can't wait initiatives. Eight initiatives that they felt every police department needed to adopt and comply with. Well, guess what? All the accredited agencies already had those policies in place. And there's been several incidents like that that I could stand here and recite as far as when people come up with good ideas, and I don't want to belittle them, I'm glad people come forward with good ideas like the eight can't wait initiatives, but we're already had those in place. So, now, what happens now since they've become accredited? Well, annually, they have to submit a report to my office that they self-attest that they are still in compliance with all of those 125 standards or best practices. And then in three years, we'll send a new team of assessors here to Lewistown, and they'll pull through the drill again. The accreditation is for three years. It's not a certificate for life. I mentioned it rolled out in 2001. We currently have 198, 195, 198 police departments accredited. In the life of the program, we've accredited 225. We lose one or two every year for a variety of reasons, okay? But we're gaining more and more police departments are becoming accredited. I can stand up here and talk all evening long about accreditation, but I know you have other things on your agenda. But I would like to wrap it up. I've been talking about accreditation, I mentioned the three assessors that were here. I just want to share with you what they said about your police department. Before I do, I mentioned those 370 best practices. I took a look at the report that they submitted. Out of those 370 best practices, the assessment team only found five file maintenance issues. Just trust me, file maintenance issues are very minor issues that your chief and accreditation manager immediately fixed, and before the assessment team left, they were in full compliance of all. That is phenomenal for a police department going through this process for the first time. I have police departments that are on their fifth, sixth reassessment, they have a heck of lot more than five file maintenance issues. So that is phenomenal for your police chief and his team as far as what they did with their initial assessment. Here's what the assessment team said about your police department. "The Lewistown Borough Police Department is a professionally managed law enforcement agency committed to modern and progressive ideals, policies, and technologies. It is evident through their policies and practices that the agency is committed to building a well-rounded agency, competently serving their community through professional standards proven by their onsite accreditation assessment. The department, Chief Clemmons and his staff, through continual review and evaluation, fulfill the ideals propagated by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association through the Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission." So with that said, anybody has an interest in accreditation, you can go to the PH Chiefs' public facing webpage, phchiefs.org. There's an accreditation tab. Those 370 best practices are all listed there. You can see exactly what your police department's complying with. There's a ton of information there. If you have any questions, you can call me, but you have a resident expert in-house that knows accreditation, because he's been put through it. So without any further ado, I would like to call up the chief and your mayor and anyone else he wants to bring up to publicly present their accreditation certificate.
Congratulations. Now, you're his mayor. Congratulations. 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 Congratulate all of you, because without the support of the elected officials, I seriously doubt it would have been such a smooth process. I can say it was a smooth process, the accreditation manager might say something else, but again, thank you for allowing me to present this. For quite a moment. We'll move into committee work. We have a long schedule here this evening, so let's keep things moving. Finance, Scott?
Well, one of the things that we're going to go over tonight is out of the budget discussions, we've come up with a proposed budget that we're going to present to the council tonight. I think Tyler can give an overview of that later in the meeting, but from a finance perspective, that's all that we're doing.
Okay, nothing for streets, law, and ordinance, Mr. Barlett?
Well, we haven't, that's November the third meeting. Do we have anything to do right in one?
No? Okay, thank you. Amendments to the agenda? Do we need to make any at this point? Public comment related to the agenda items? You have three minutes if anybody would like to address us at this time. And Diane Snook from New Life Church, you may go to the podium and present what she needs to be.
Good afternoon. I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak in person about our request. My name is Diane Snook. It looks like I have to say where I live here in the county. I live at 49 Carden Lane. That is in Granville Township. I'm representing the New Life Church in Burnham, and we would like to do what we're calling a food and fellowship activity at the Fountain Park Fountain Square on at the Five Points. Looking to grill hot dogs, have some hot soup, be there, thinking like around 10:30 on a Saturday morning till 2:00 or 2:30, just welcoming people and chatting with people, encouraging people. If they're open to prayer, we will pray with them. There is no cost for any of this. The food will be, the hot dogs will be done on a grill right there at the square, or excuse me, at the Fountain Park. And the soup will actually be made in our church kitchen with the help of one of our church members who is involved with doing community meals. So she has the skill and the knowledge of preparing a large amount of soup. We're just going to hope to talk to people and again, encourage them. There's no cost to any of this. This is all being done by donations from within our neighborhood, our church family, the numerous different volunteers from several of the local churches that are willing to come and just talk with folks. Again, just a point of encouragement, a little bit of hot food on maybe a cold day. Ultimately, our goal would be to make this a kind of monthly thing. We were hoping to do it in November and December, then take January and February off because it's so bitter cold, and then possibly pick it back up again in March. It always sort of depended upon the response by the community, people in the neighborhood. I'm not sure what else you need to know. We were looking towards maybe starting on Saturday, November 29th, and then another Saturday in December, and then from there, kind of evaluating where we're at.
I have a question. Do you have a safe serve food license? Does somebody in your organization have that?
Yes, yes, our church does. Our church facility has a safe serve kitchen facility, because our church also has a daycare in that that is operated out of the church, and they use the church kitchen for preparing meals for the students or the children in the daycare facility.
Counsel, have any questions?
I think it's a great idea.
And this is what we had talked about last council meeting, and then I got some additional information, obviously Diane's here, so I do have it under the consent agenda as a facility. So, thank you.
Thank you for listening and having me here.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address counsel this time? Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. Looks like there's four items here. Approval of the minutes from November 3rd.
Just the facility using the council. That's it.
Schedule of bills. Facility use for New Life Church and the approval or receipt of the tax collector. How do you, House Counsel, want to take this? All in one?
All in one, yes.
Make it, entertain a motion?
I should note, for the previous.
So have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Foes?
That was for all four, right?
Yeah, that was all four. Do you have a report?
Yeah, I missed the last council meeting, it was preoccupied. Station 14 for October responded 29 alarms, 20 in town, 9 out. Station 32 responded 18 calls, 16 in, 2 out. I really don't have anything much other than the ladder truck is a fire line. Took it down two weeks ago. Took it down on Saturday, I got a phone call on a Tuesday, said they got the new gun, but it's not working. They don't know if it's some kind of computer chip issue or whatever. I've not heard anything back from them. I've also had some other things that I wanted attention drawn to. They have a person that's going to re-stripe the striping that's coming off of it while it is there. We've been having problems beforehand, and obviously, some people understand what I'm saying, some will not, but whenever you go from drive to pump gear, it grinds. When you go from pump gear to drive, it grinds. So I'm having that looked at also. And the biggest concern I have is, I'm hoping counsel will back me, and I'm sure they will, but whenever it was purchased and inspected in Florida, there was an 18-foot roof ladder that was not on the rig at the time. It didn't come after it came to Lancaster. That is on the driver's side where the ladders are stacked, that you can easily access them from the ground. The very bottom ladder, if you look at the rig and the ladder's laying in that bed, there's a space about this big on each end, and in the middle, it's touching. So that means that compartment is bowed. Okay? I don't know what the cause is. I told them that was a big concern of mine. If in fact, they come back and say their engineers say it's okay, I hope you back me, because I'm going to make them put that in writing, that it is okay that 10 years down the road, it doesn't snap in half, because there's definitely an issue there. That should not be bowed. But like I said, I've not heard anything back from them. It's been pretty hush-hush, so.
Is that a ring?
I will be out of town Friday the 21st until the 30th of November. Anything fire related, contact Deputy Chief Markley. And from the side of the Lewistown Fire Department, I would like to thank Tyler for his time, being the borough manager. He has helped us out tremendously, has done a good job with us, listened to what we had to say. You will be missed, and good luck.
Thank you. Amy, MS?
I'll be brief also. I also missed off here because I was a little bit busy. So in September, we had a total of 724 calls, of which 253 were in the borough of Lewistown. And in October, 690 total calls, 206 of which were in the borough of Lewistown. Anybody have any questions for me? I know you guys got a lot to do, so.
I guess we're good. Thank you. Mayor, report.
I hope I don't embarrass them, but Jake, do you want to come forward? I didn't tell them I was doing this, so.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Okay, I'd like to introduce Jake Flood. He did a write-in campaign, and will be the new councilperson as of January. Do you want to tell a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name's Jake Flood. I grew up in Lewistown. Yeah, I've lived here almost my entire life. I went to Penn State University, just over in State College, and was at school there for four years. I have a degree in political science. I lived over there for the next three years, and then last year, moved back to Lewistown. I live on West Fourth Street. I've got a wife, I've got two little kids. I care a lot about parks and safety and, yeah, I care a lot about the community, and I'm really excited to see how I can contribute.
We're very lucky to have this young gentleman as hard as here, and he's, will make a big, you know, addition, a wonderful addition to the council, so. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
The only other thing I know, we had a long meeting, but I just wanted to remind everybody about the upcoming events. We have the Christmas parade, the first two days are the two days of the ice festival, and then the Kwanis Pan cake festival. So that's all beginning of December, December 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. So it would be nice to have a nice attendance. It's a lot of work that goes into planning this project, and it's a wonderful thing to have downtown, so I hope everybody comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief, Dave.
Okay, for October, we had 314 calls for service, 57 traffic citations were issued, 34 non-traffic, 10 DUI arrests, and for our drug investigator report, we had three active investigations, two new investigations, three undercover buys, one felony arrest, one search warrant, seized approximately 120 grams of heroin and fentanyl, six grams of methamphetamine, and Tyler's picture up there. That was a coordinated effort with the Pennsylvania State Police, where they seized 69 bricks of fentanyl, which was en route to Lewistown. It was 3,450 bags of fentanyl there, enough to kill a lot of people, so. Good job for our drug investigators past month, and continue to do what he does.
Any questions for the chief? First, listener, what?
I don't have anything standing there. I'll jump in with some of the new business.
Borough manager?
So I gave you a cost and fee proposal there. Essentially, I believe we worked with finance at this point to go through everything. I think I got all of the updated numbers in there at this point. Any sewer reading adjustments, the collections adjustment, refuse will stay in the same. We thought that everything else was staying kind of steady at this point. There was a good revenue versus expense on like parking permits and stuff. I think the only thing that there was a discussion about was parking tickets, and I'm not even sure if it's in this version or not, but do we need to update the ordinance for that? So I'll have them before I leave. I'll get the ordinance ready to be advertised at the 15th, so that you guys can prove it January. So that'll be there for approval. 2026 LSA grant. I have one queued up, ready to go with Nick from GSL. I may try to pull a second one together, and I haven't talked to the chief yet, but trying to get some police vehicles in a potential LSA grant. State budget passed, so our hope is that the CFA does meet tomorrow at 10:30 virtually. I don't know if they're going to start rolling out any grants or not, but that is at 10:30. There's nothing on their agenda saying. There's some discussion points, but I'm hoping there's a little copy at the bottom. I can't remember what it says, but I'm hoping that that's going to be the cue to start pushing out some, at least some sewer grants at this point, but they do meet tomorrow. So I have that approval, and then there is an approval later. Carol, do you have anything to say for the abandonment of that, or is it kind of self-explanatory in the approval?
Forgot to give you the actual documents. So, Carol, hi. I work for Cedar Cog on the county and the municipalities. We just have on the new business consideration of approvals. This is the, we have already gone through the process to abandon the West Fourth, West Fifth, North Front Street, I think it was. We had a street reconstruction budget line in the 2023 CDVG contract. We abandoned that and requested that that funding, 100% of that funding, go towards the purchase of fire safety equipment. That was approved and has gone through, so tonight is the 2024 budget line, where we're abandoning the budget line we had for rep park improvements, and 100% of that funding will go towards the fire safety equipment purchase as well. And then, I think the last. And then I think the last thing that we did here for fire safety was approve the two thousand and twenty-five CDVG request for our phase two of the purchase of the fire safety equipment. So I guess that's self-explanatory. If anyone has any questions?
And the reason we abandoned Red Park was we initially thought that it was going to be eligible for the CDVG. But then when we talked about flood plain and floodways and stuff like that.
Yes. The. Yes, because the, our primary focus was in paving the parking lot. And DCD came back and said that because it was in the floodway, not even just a flood plain, but the floodway, we would have to use permeable surfacing. So not actually paving, but like a grid pattern or something so that water could go through. That would be far more expensive than paving because we would have to modify the existing parking lot. So during a couple of meetings, discussions, we decided that the best use of that would be for fire safety equipment of the Lewis Town Fire Department. So I thank Tyler for working with the chief to come up with a plan for, we have, we're combining twenty-three and twenty-four funds for the initial purchase and then that won't quite cover it. So that's why we requested funding in twenty-five to finish that.
Do we have a total or estimated total value here that's going to go towards the fire department?
So the two thousand and twenty-three and this two thousand and twenty-four, these two years of funding are a little over two hundred and forty thousand dollars together. So the estimated cost of the entire purchase, it was thirty-five self-contained breathing apparatus is what we're going for. Because the prices change and because it will depend on the exact quote that we had for the funding that we had available, that's why we split it into two phases of procurement. The Lewis Town will be able to use twenty-three and twenty-four and get as many as they can. And then we won't have to wait till the twenty-five funding is approved by DCD. We'll know by then how much is left. And so it may or may not, I think it may not take all of twenty-five's funding, but we have that set aside for it so that we can complete that order by the end of. It would be, we're always a year behind because of the federal fiscal year. So we would hope that that purchase could be done by the end of the next calendar year or the beginning of twenty-seventh.
Yeah, because it would be available in September of twenty-six. Ideally, that's when it's supposed to be.
Right, right. But we didn't want to wait that long to make any purchases at all. So that's why we split into two. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Your numbers are sound as long as.
Good. Oh, that's always a relief. And I, again, I'd like to thank Tyler and the chief. There was a lot of conversation going around to try to figure out how to make this happen, so.
DCD had.
Brian Meyer was also mostly involved in this too, lieutenant from the city.
Yeah, great to tell you. It was a team effort for sure and it'll continue to be a team effort. Thank you very much, Tyler.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I got, but I will, as we go down through these, I'm sure I'll give you some additional information. So we'll move into new business. Most of these have to be taken individually, so we can't do it separately or together. Recommend approval of ordinance, two thousand and twenty-five, twelve is advertised to PMRS Retirement Contribution.
So this is the one where it allows our non-uniformed employees to put in additional money into their retirement. No cost to the borough. This is all in that if they feel like they need to make up some money that they have lost or stuff like that. So this just gives them the ability to voluntarily put some additional funding.
And that has been advertised?
Yes, yeah.
You say it has been?
Yep.
These will all be roll call bills, by the way. Have a motion? All in favor, sorry, roll call?
Lisa Nutson?
Yes.
Bob Barlett?
Yes.
Jim Steele?
Yes.
Steve Nutson?
Yes.
Scott Gutcho?
Yes.
Matt Moore?
Yes.
Recommend approval to advertise the two thousand and twenty-six budget.
All right, so obviously I commend the finance committee and we've had several meetings over the last couple of weeks with the budget. So you want to give an overview? I think you guys have a piece of paper in front of you. I don't know if I do myself. Get an overview.
The whole budget's somewhere sitting.
I do have the whole budget.
Yeah, but looking at it, the general borough, looks like it'll be around fifty thousand in the positive. The refuse department, two hundred and fifty some in the positive. Waste water collections, we typically budget to reserve two hundred and fifty thousand, but there was some funding we received this year that will, the expenses will be next year. So that should be looking about a hundred and sixty and then less, what we received, five hundred thousand-ish year against that. And the wastewater treatment, the plant, look to reserve around three hundred and fifty thousand there. Specialty tax, spending a little over fourteen thousand, that is because of the fire, the fire expenses, the new fire expenses. And the state liquid fuels, a hundred and thirty-eight overspending, but that was because of the alley paving. We were reserving funds to be able to account for that. But overall, all that we would be, looks like about three hundred thousand in the positive overall.
And then within that budget, there is some millage adjustments, the lighting adjustments. So that one will be going from point seven-three-six to one point one-one-nine mils. That would be to cover streetlights, red lights, all that good stuff that the borough is responsible for paying. Fire tax adjustment, that's going from point two-six-seven to point two-two-nine-nine mils. And then the real estate tax adjustment would go from thirteen point eight-five-nine to fourteen point eight-five-nine. And I think that totals about one point seven-eight mils. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, yes.
And which we believe the average to be, did you calculate that?
Yeah, the average household will see about a forty-five dollar increase.